For the year, if we could, we'll go ahead and start with the roll call.
Commissioner Ruth.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Christensen.
Here.
Commissioner Wilk.
Here.
Chair Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you for coming. This meeting is a cablecast live on Charter Communications, cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and is being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website at www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Ben Thompson, and if you could just make sure your phone is on silent, then that would help us. And if you do come up to speak, we ask that you sign in so we have your name for the record. With that, we'll start off with oral communications. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Not this evening.
Okay. Now is the time for public comments for any item that's not on tonight's agenda, so if you want to come up and speak to us about an item not on the agenda, this is your chance for three minutes at the mic.
Okay, thank you. Sheree McCoy here. And the purpose of the Capitola Mall is to make money for Capitola. These days, many consumers shop online and a trip to the mall is unnecessary. We need a special place that is more than just for shopping, a true destination spot where people can spend their money, enjoy a unique Capitola experience. Having an enclosed contiguous mall brings the masses together and provides a sense of community. When Merleau-Guyer presented their proposal for redevelopment, they showed pictures of the Venetian, the Six Sisters, and other examples of Capitola architecture. Then they showed drawings with their own interpretation for a new Capitola aesthetic. The proposal does not reflect Capitola and looks like any ugly mall in America with high-density housing. The proposal dedicates a considerable amount of property and amenities exclusively for new residential use: courtyards with relaxing green spaces, cozy group gathering spaces, expansive bar seating, relaxing lounge nooks, and turf for outdoor games and activities. Amenities such as these should be in the grand plan for all mall patrons, not for newly-created residents with their 1,100 cars. Unrealistically, the renderings show a handful of vehicles with people happily walking in front of the cars. New streets with a four-way intersection in the middle of the project does not build community, it builds separation. Creating new streets for shoppers and residential access will not eliminate the traffic on the surrounding streets. Omitting housing from the project frees up the massive amount of green space that the plan reserves exclusively for residential use. Mall green space can be converted from a bunch of trees in the parking lot to usable green space. Research indicates that residential use for the site is not profitable for Capitola. The many complications and contingencies within the proposal dissipate when residential use is moved from the plan. Outdoor dining doesn't have to be eating at a table on a sidewalk thoroughfare next to a street with cars. Outdoor dining should offer patrons a relaxing place to get away from it all, including the escape from car exhausts, loud Bluetooth conversations, and blaring radios, honking horns, and cussing from drivers waiting for motorists to hurry up and navigate the angled parking spaces on the street. Although the plan frowns upon orphaned buildings, it calls for isolated units that introduce sidewalk-oriented commercial buildings along 41st Avenue, street frontage. Vehicles must drive through the parking lot to access these businesses. A contiguous mall with a pedestrian inner core of courtyards, restaurants, and shops would better serve us all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, do we have anybody else who'd like to come and speak to our item? Not seen any. I'll bring it back for commission comments. Peter?
I have a comment on heritage trees. There's been some progress on heritage trees since we've last met. You may recall in October, there was a split vote on not a heritage tree, but a tree that was intended to ask for a permit to remove it, and it was denied. And the applicant mentioned that, well, where is the city's skin in the game, so to speak? They offered to sell it to us for a dollar, basically if we could take over the liability. So it turns out, we have an opportunity to put some skin in the game, and specifically Paragraph 1212020, Paragraph G in our Goals and Policy talks about the goal of the city to develop partnerships regarding heritage trees, et cetera, et cetera, and it even goes so far as to say the funds may become available at the Community Tree Fund. So I brought this up at the Committee on the Environment, and they unanimously wanted to pursue the notion of providing those funds for applicants to maintain their trees. And I then talked with staff, and staff agreed, even though it's already in the code, there is no policy as to how to implement access to those funds. So staff agreed that they would look into writing such a policy for our review.
Okay.
So that's the status there.
Very good. I think it's going to City Council in January?
Actually, it'll be going this month, December 19th, due to the weather, and the City Council asked that it come sooner if possible, and the applicant was willing to make that happen.
Oh, very good. Great. Well, thanks for sharing that with us, Peter. Any other?
Yeah, I want to acknowledge the passing of Ron Graves. He passed away about three weeks ago. Ron served on the council for nearly 31 years, first elected in 1968. He served on this body also, I believe, for four more years, and he really did a lot for this city. So I'd just like to acknowledge that he's gone and we miss him, and recognize that he did so much for this town.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with that, and he may have been on planning commission more than four years. He was here for a while, I know, and he was on the Traffic and Parking Commission.
Right.
He may have been on a couple other commissions, so he definitely served the city, and we want to remember things for that. Now we'll move on to staff comments.
No staff comments this evening. I'll have an update at the end of the meeting about the LCP update.
Okay, very good. Okay, with that, then we'll move on to approval of our minutes from our November 7th meeting.
Can I have an addendum to that? I'm sorry.
I was gonna have one correction.
Okay.
I also have a correction.
Oh, okay. Under, I'd be the individual comments or concerns that were voiced by the commissioners. I think it's page seven.
Okay.
I'm not certain if it's, I think that's what it is. At least under my comments, it said, attributed to me, we don't want too much open spaces, it can be problematic. I don't believe I said anything like that.
I may have said that. I think that was me.
Of course, thank you. I remember.
And my comment was that, talking about thanking the participants, I only thanked Merleau-Guyer, not the rest of us.
Thank you. I'll change that, and then that'll be the final.
I'll move approval as modified.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Passage unanimously. Okay, so now we're on item four. This is a consent calendar. We have one item for 706 Gilroy Drive. In the consent calendar, we approve all the items in the consent calendar with one vote, unless somebody would like to pull the item. So do we have anybody from the audience or the planning commission that would like to pull the item? No?
I move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
A second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and very good. Welcome. 706 Gilroy, you're good to go. You're welcome to stick around the rest of the meeting if you'd like. I'm sure it's gonna be exciting, but it's up to you. Good luck. Okay, that moves us to item five, our public hearing, so we're gonna start off with item A1008 Chittendale Lane.
Okay. I'm just gonna give you a brief overview. We had an appeal for 1,008 Chittenden Lane for a property that we're having some stormwater issues with and runoff onto the neighboring property. I don't want to get too much into the details of this. Steve Justburg, our Public Works Director, has been working with the property owner, and they're cooperating, and they're supposed to bring in plans, I believe, in the next week or so to address the item. They met on-site last week. So what we'd like to do is, in the event that the property owner stopped working with the city, we'd like to be able to have a subcommittee that the appeal could be heard by. We're looking for two planning commissioners. We're hoping not to have to go to that stage. He really seems to be cooperating at this point, and, but in the event, we wouldn't want to hold off on this review until the January meeting, because it's the third Thursday in January. So basically, I don't want to over-bring up too many details of it, because I think it is getting worked out, but if we could get two volunteers to participate.
Only we had a land use attorney on the board.
Yeah, well, I think he's a, would be a good choice to have.
Yes, I volunteer.
Okay, and do we have another?
I'll do it with Ed.
Okay, and so it just needs to be the two people?
Two people, and we'll let you know if this will occur, so we're hoping.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, hopefully that all works out for them.
Thank you.
So that was quick. This may be a fast knife. Item B, 1591 Prospect Avenue for a fence permit location with a location exception and revocable encroachment permit.
Good evening, commissioners. Chair Welch, the application before you is proposing to construct a fence and privacy screens which will encroach into the public right-of-way. The property is located at 1591 Prospect Avenue within the single-family residential zoning district. The proposal includes a major revocable encroachment permit and an exception to the fence standards, which both require planning commission review. The lot is on the corner of Prospect and Lincoln Avenue, within the jewel box, oh, excuse me, near the jewel box neighborhood, and is surrounded by one- and two-story single-family homes. The property and fence, as it appears today, up there, the existing fence is aligned with the approximate property boundary. Above are the locations of the proposed encroachments with the pink line. It's hard to see, but it's near the, right next to the red one, parallel to the home, showing the property boundary. The proposed wall, seen in red, would be made of plastered concrete blocks and has a maximum height of 42 inches. The privacy screens, seen in blue between the property line and the wall there, will consist of wooden posts and slats for a maximum height of five and a half feet. The proposed wall and privacy screen elevations are shown here. The planning commission must evaluate major revocable encroachment permits using the following considerations: the expense and difficulty that will be entailed in removing the improvements, whether the proposed improvements are in conformity with the size, scale, and aesthetics of the surrounding neighborhood, the preservation of views, and whether granting the permit would tend to result in a granting of special privilege. These considerations were analyzed in the staff report, and no conflicts were found. These considerations were analyzed in the staff report and no conflicts were found. Above are the locations of the proposed encroachments. Oops, excuse me, same looking slide there. The application also includes an exception to the fence location. Corner lot fences are required to be set back at least five feet from the property line on that side of the lot, which has the greatest length along the street. In this case, that would be Lincoln Avenue, uh, parallel to the pink line there. Pink line shown represents the property boundary and the green line, parallel to it, represents the five-foot setback. The areas in red indicate portions of the wall and privacy screen that enter into the required five-foot setback. So it's really just the, the end pieces of one privacy screen and the end piece of the, the wall there as it crosses from the private property line to the public right of way. Staff recommends that the planning commission review and approve the encroachment permit and fence permit based on the conditions of approval and findings.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Um, any questions for staff?
Was this posted on the property?
I believe so.
As I, when I went by, where was it posted? I couldn't find it.
I wonder with the weather, if something happened to the posting.
I went, uh, right when the, um, materials were, so it was kinda before the, and who posted it? I mean, they would know where it was posted. I never saw it.
It's usually Matt or I. Um, it would have been done the,
Okay.
The twenty-second or twenty-fifth.
So I had that question, cause as far as, I mean, I-
You know, um, for a fence permit and a major revocable encroachment permit, I do not think it requires-
Public hearing?
-posting on the site.
Anyway.
But we'll, we can look into that if there was-
My second question is, I just, I'm not getting this. Why are, why are they building into the right of way? What's the reason?
Wanted to? That's, that's very common on the street, actually. Uh, any of the neighborhoods that don't have, um, curb gutter and sidewalk required there, um, have, if you look up on Prospect Avenue, there's multiple examples and more coming, actually, but, uh, it's just, uh, something that Public Works generally has done in my experience on Depot Hill and, um, the Jewel Box, that area of the Jewel Box.
Am I understanding this right? There's a, they have a, a particular property, they have a property line and they're now wanting to incorporate, what, some five feet by whatever of property that's not theirs into their property?
Correct.
And we think that's a good idea.
And it's in the sidewalk exempt?
Yes.
Yeah, so there, we actually have a, a map on file of areas that are not planned for sidewalks, the sidewalk exempt areas, and this is in one of the sidewalk exempt areas. So in the past, the Public Works will accept applications, but with the understanding that if we were ever to make improvements, that it would be at the property owner's cost to remove these improvements.
Isn't there, isn't there precedent along that same street where other-
There is.
-property did exactly that?
Commissioner Newman brings up a good point there, cause the people do stand to gain a significant amount of, of public land when they install a fence out in the public right of way like this, so.
But precedent has been set-
It has.
-along that very same street.
Commissioner Ruth?
Yeah, it is pretty prevalent up there and on Depot Hill also. Depot Hill, I think almost everyone does that. Does, does the proposed wall follow the line of the current fence with the exception of the corner?
So it, it deviates once it reaches the corner of, of Prospect and Lincoln.
But along that long linear area on Lincoln, it follows the same line as the fence?
Uh, as the current one, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Christensen, you have any comments?
Um, the, the encourageable, the major encourageable permit, it, it includes removing the wall and the patio outside the property line, correct? Everything that the owners constructed outside the pink line is removable by their expense, correct? I have a problem with the plum trees. I, and removing the plum trees, it seems kinda, honest opinion.
I know Assistant Planner Sisanto reviewed the canopy coverage, um, which still remains after the removal of the plum trees. And we also, were they fruiting plum or not fruiting plum?
They're fruiting.
I was under the impression they weren't fruiting, but.
Cause if they're fruiting plums, we don't really, people are allowed to just pull out fruit trees, so.
Fruit trees, they can, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I know this is prevalent on Depot Hill, but I have some real heartburn about a couple of specific properties on Depot Hill that we approved that has come back to haunt, well, me as an individual and I'm sure the city. One is on Grand and Central and so on that one, we approved it and I, it was a learning lesson for me as a planning commissioner to take a tape measure with me when I go look at these, uh, these plans, because on that one, I didn't measure out from the house. I, the staff report had said they were not allowed to move bollards that were in front because where the road was closed. And so I took for that, there would be granted be inside those bollards. Well, the applicant, in fact, moved two bollards and put a fire pit, a putting green way out into an area, which was an area at the end of Grand where cars normally turn around and it creates so much havoc, we ended up having to go back and at least make the applicant put a turnaround in, um, because there was no room for the, for, uh, you know, visitors up in that area to turn around and they had knocked the neighbor's gate off the driveway a couple of times. So that one, it, what ends up happening is, uh, it does set a precedence, because then everybody along that street wants to move their fence line out to where, um, this property line is. And it takes up parking places, is what it does. It makes it more congested up there. That's one. The second one is at the end of, uh, again, on Grand and Oakland. And so they did, uh, the major evoc, uh, encroachment permit revocable that they would pay for it and they put a big fire pit in and they already had a hedge there. This is the area where our walkway was, uh, going along the bluff there and since a segment had fallen off, they closed off that walkway because their, this area was in, kinda in the walkway. And this week, the, uh, walkway completely fell away on the bluff, all the way up to their hedge. So there's no access, even though, um, we could, if the city chose to, make them pull out their hedge and pull out their wall and run the sidewalk, uh, the walkway along that area. I see this property's a little bit different because they don't have those type of issues there, but it's, you, I guess sometimes you don't notice the impacts downstream when you make these types of, uh, conditions. So I don't know that have specific heartburn. I looked at it and, uh, it is a sidewalk exempt area. Um, but I just know, in my tenure here, we've had two of them that's come back to kinda haunt us in the process in doing that. So while we have a precedent, it's not always a good precedent, I guess is my thought, so.
So I'll, I'll save my comments till after we hear from the public and so forth, but I do have one more question.
An applicant is here as well, so.
Pardon?
The applicant is here as well, so.
Right, I wanna hear.
Yeah.
I do have one more question. When we grant an encroachment permit like this to take over public property, is it exclusive? Or if they put a fire pit there, can I use it?
If you can get over the finish.
Do they get exclusive use of this area to the, uh, exclusion of the rest of the ten thousand citizens of Capitola? In that case, let, let them put in a hot tub. I think I prefer that. Well, you know, that, I, I am familiar with a situation just like that where someone's claims to write the, a hot tub on someone else's property that has three hundred and ninety-five shareholders. I say, well, just keep it hot. You can have a lot of company.
Yeah. Very good. Well, there's no more questions, all of-
No, I didn't get an answer to that one.
Oh, you wanna?
Is it exclusive or is it, uh, just they get to use it along with everyone else?
You know, um, basically the, the document that's recorded is only for the revocable encroachment permit, so I don't, we don't touch upon that in, as, I don't think there's any dedication of exclusive rights associated with that. So it's a great question. I can follow, if that's something that we should be, um, placing on these deed restrictions or clarifying, we could do that with our city attorney.
I know that, that there's a lot of history here that goes back to when Capitola became a city, but that doesn't mean we can't relook at some of these things. There's an area, for example, along the coast there, the path, where people have taken over part of the property that belongs to the, now the, the Regional Transportation Commission and built little patios and things in there because they claim a prescriptive right to use that area, which in that case would not be exclusive, so everyone should know that they're welcome to use those areas, uh, if they want. They have as much right as the people who, uh, improved them.
Interesting. Okay, uh, no more questions for staff. I'll open up for the applicant. We have the applicant here?
My name is Pedro Rosado. I am both the applicant and the architect that prepared the, uh, plans, uh, for the owners. And, um, you, you alluded a little bit to the background, um, of Capitola and, um, what I wish to touch upon, which is, uh, significant in this case, uh, of this corner lot, is that, uh, the side yards are extremely narrow and whether the, whether the house was put where it sat because of the, uh, the shrinking of the lot, or maybe that's what somebody thought of at one time, uh, many years ago when the, uh, when the property was developed, uh, is beyond me. But what it did was it left, uh, on the east side, uh, a three-foot side yard, which isn't very much usable space. And then down on the south side, there's about, uh, maybe an eight by, uh, ten-foot space, uh, as a rear yard. And, and then the front yard, uh, of course, has a little bit over fifteen feet, uh, that's along Prospect Avenue. And along Lincoln Avenue, um, there's, uh, the side yard, the actual side yard's only eight feet wide. Um, so, but there is actually approximately nineteen feet there and if you take away, uh, the five feet that, uh, uh, between the curb and the, and where the wall wants to be placed, then you have about fourteen feet left and then you put a wall in it, so you're down to thirteen feet of usable space on that side. And that's the only area, uh, which, uh, which the owners could use as, uh, maybe a little barbecue area or even sitting and, and lounging. Um, but the primary, uh, their thought was to have a, a wall that would provide some privacy between cars passing by and, and anybody walking along, um, Lincoln Avenue. The, by putting in the wall, um, also does not, uh, in my opinion, uh, take up any, any more of the, uh, the accessible parking, uh, that already exists along the street unless the, uh, city decides to widen, uh, or put in sidewalks. So that, that's a little bit of background on the shrinking, uh, on the shrinking yards of the, the property. But the owners are asking, are asking the city to grant an encroachment, uh, to install a pro, wall and privacy partitions that create a usable, uh, area separated from traffic and people, uh, that are walking along Lincoln Avenue. So the, the wall, um, proposed on Lincoln side is to be in line with the adjacent neighbor. Uh, now, um, and also the landscape is proposed to match, uh, that of the, the neighbor which has, uh, flax, uh, that are spaced apart. Uh, and so what we wanted to do was continue that along this side. The, the Prospect side is already landscaped with, uh, grass. Uh, they don't plan on, uh, on changing any of that. Uh, there was a comment about, uh, the plum trees being removed and in order to gain, gain the space, the, uh, the trees would be in the way and it would be extremely difficult to, uh, to put the wall through them, uh, or have them in place and keep the trees. One thing that I could, on behalf of the owners, is recommend to take and, uh, put in two plum trees. I'm not sure, uh, at this point, how they're going to, um, how they would fit, uh, in there, but that could be done. And so, and so, um, we have reviewed the staff report and concurred with findings and requirements necessary to obtain a permit for the improvements. We believe that the proposed improvements are in keeping with the neighborhood character and hope that the board finds in favor of this proposal. Um, and if anybody would like to ask any, any other questions.
Yes, sir.
Whose trees are those that are coming out?
They're, they're pretty close to the, uh, don't, they're, they're on the, uh, public right of way.
They're, they're, uh, they're outside the boundaries of the property, right?
Yes.
Okay, so given the right to take, take out city trees?
We, we typically, in areas that are not, um, utilized by the city, the unimproved right of way, we allow applicant, um, people to plant in those areas and we also expect them to care and, um, maintain any trees in that area. So we would, as the city, we would, we would have the applicant be the owner responsible for any trees within that portion of the right of way.
Well, they're already there, the trees, so what I'm hearing is that the trees are coming out, that the applicant is, this is, goes to the commissioner's comments, the applicant is basically being given a, a pass to remove city trees. Okay, just so I understand.
Well, you know, it just, I don't, Ed, I know for me, when I built my place, I had to put the improvements in that area. So, um, but I have, now I have to take one out because P G N is making me, but, um, so I don't know if it's, if it's really a city tree. I mean, they, they, they required me to landscape it. I couldn't leave it open, so.
I think Public Works would say it's the property owner's tree.
That's what I, that's my guess.
Cause we expect them, if they may have planted the tree and they should maintain those trees that are adjacent to their property in that unimproved right of way.
Yeah, that could be a, it's, it's definitely an awkward area with these.
We've had instances in the past where we've had to have property owners remove trees in that area and the city doesn't take ownership of them. It's the responsibility of the adjacent property owner.
Any other questions for Mr. Rosado?
I have a note to that, uh, removing those plum trees improved the sightlines. I don't know if I was at the right property or whatever, but is that, did they, uh?
It's, they're, they're pretty far from the corner where the sightlines come into play, so I don't think that would affect.
Okay.
Any more questions for Mr. Rosado?
Can you show the slide that has the, uh, photograph of the house with the white fence? That one. So where are the palm trees in that picture?
Plum trees?
Plum trees?
No, the palm trees.
No, they're plum.
Plum trees.
They would be to the right of the house as you see it.
On the right side, you see the, uh, that's a magnolia tree on the corner. And then right behind it, uh, on Lincoln Avenue is the oak tree. And then behind that are the, uh, two plum trees.
That's right at the end of the arrow. The Lincoln arrow ends right at the plum tree. Yeah.
So the question I asked staff was the, the fence, will the new wall will be where the current fence is?
Yes, the fence will be removed.
But on the plan, it shows the wall going right through the tree.
Correct.
There you go.
Which tree, the magnolia or?
The plum trees. That's right.
It is, it's the plum tree.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Rosado? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, do we have any other, uh, people in our public that would like to speak on this item? No? Not seen any? I'll bring it back to the planning- item? No? Not seen any? I'll bring it back to the planning commission.
So I think we should get an opinion from the city attorney whether we're empowered to give away public property like this without consideration.
Isn't that what an encroach permit allows?
Well, there, you know, encroachment permit covers a lot of different things, like a sign hanging over. But this is basically taking a strip of property that's public property and having it fenced in by the homeowner to increase and obviously increase the value of their property as a gift. And it is Christmas time, I know. But I think that we should get an opinion. I just have a vague idea in my mind that there's some rules about that in the state codes.
So are you suggesting we continue this item?
Yeah, that we get an opinion from the city attorney as to the propriety and not, you know, maybe it's been done in the past, but that doesn't mean it's good.
That's my, I think in this spot, I mean, you see where the neighbor's wall is. You talk about being in alignment with that. And I think improvements are a good thing to a point. This one, because it does have curb and gutter, it kind of already limits, I think the most general public would think that was someone's private property on the other side of the curb and gutter. But I understand your concern. I know that the city, and my, having to build my place, requires, then I don't, I didn't ask to put a fence up, but they require me to maintain it. As far as anybody knows, it's, it's my property. So, but I understand your concern. My only concern was when we do these, we have to be careful that we're not giving away city rights and city property to the point that it affects everybody else. And this one, I don't necessarily see that, but...
The, the house next door that he's wanting to, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, no, go right in.
The, the house right next door that we're looking at, that he wants to match up with that wall.
Correct.
But that house, that's the front, that's their front yard, correct? He's on a corner where that's technically his side yard, right? So he has a pretty nice front yard with a grass patch and a driveway. The eight feet that's included in his property up to that pink line on your site map seem to be a sufficient side yard, you know? I mean, as far as side yards go. And what was, I'm just curious as to, instead of encroaching into public space, what was the determinant, like, the, the decision-making process of why not just to ask to put the wall right on the property line? You know, to just, to include their own yard, their eight feet, and then leave the public space alone, including the plum trees and the oak tree? And to keep it kind of simple, you know? I, I just...
This is what they wanted. They pursued this from the beginning. So, yeah, we, you know, told them what the rules were, and they decided to go with this option, so.
I think, I think the dichotomy of this whole thing, the challenging part is that it's this area that we make the homeowner responsible for to maintain it, but then we want to set boundaries. You know, you understand what I'm saying? It's like, they're, they're, and I should go back a little bit about the trees. Anything under six inches in diameter at four feet high, I think we, it doesn't count. So the one plum tree, and then the other ones are, it doesn't, it doesn't matter whether they're bearing fruit. A plum tree's a plum tree, right? So I think that because they're fruit trees, they could remove them either way. But having said that, I don't, I hate to make a problem worse, but I don't know that this is really going to be one of those that's going to affect the long-term issues that we saw in some of these other items that I brought up. But I'll defer to our group and see where we want to go with this. Do we have someone that would like to try a motion, or do we want to have a motion to continue?
I don't have a problem with it. I, I think all along Prospect there, we have all kinds of encroachments. I think down on the corner, what is it, Garnet in Prospect, there's a fence, post-rail type fence that encroaches into the right-of-way. I don't, not even sure they even got permits. But, yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I'd move approval.
Okay. Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to move approval. A second? Some inquisitive minds, people. You know what, I'll do a second for discussion. I'll approve a second just for discussion. And, you know, my thought is, this, because of the curb and gutter, when you, when you look at especially the toolbox area, it's also been in our plan declared as a non, a sidewalk exempt area. So you hate to see unimprovements through, around that area. To me, I think it's going to add to it, and at least it will be an improvement area. Yes, do they get to claim that as their yard? They basically already do. And not only do they have that as their yard without a fence there, and you're right, if they put a fire pit in or a hot tub, probably a few people would jump in, but without the fence. But we require them already, or ask them to maintain that area. So for me, I don't know if I have a little heartburn with this one based on the curb and gutter being there. It's not going to affect the general public, but I understand, Commissioner Newman's.
It also appears the wall on the neighbor's house there, the wall closest to the street is encroaching in the city.
Oh, it's absolutely encroaching. Yeah, there's no doubt that one.
You know, they're, they're enjoying that, that aspect of it.
I agree.
My only concern is that our land use attorney wanted to get another legal opinion, and I respect his request.
Well, here's, so this is where we're at. We have a motion with a second, and we can call for the vote. And if we don't get majority, then it doesn't pass, and then we can try something else.
Do a roll call, please.
Yeah, we can do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
No.
Commissioner Christensen?
No.
Commissioner Wilk?
No.
Chair Welch?
Aye. So the motion fails, so I guess that takes it back to, you want to try a motion continuing? Or does someone have a better idea?
Well, I'm comfortable with just denying it and letting them go to the city council, and they can decide if they want to perpetuate the gift of public property or not.
Well, I think I would change my vote if, if you had an opportunity to get your second legal opinion, and the legal opinion didn't give us any horrible information. So I just assume we continue this and give staff an opportunity to get more legal advice and then bring this up again at another meeting rather than burdening the city council with another one of our failures.
But we can leave it up to the applicant whether they want to take a denial and appeal it or?
Yeah, so, Mr. Rosado, you, you can come on up. So you understand right now, the application was denied, so you have a choice, and we're going to hopefully give you a choice here, that you can accept that denial. And with that, you could go to the city council and appeal our decision and see what they think. Or we could look at continuing this and let our staff get better information and, and bring, and then you would come back to this body again.
Sure, let's continue it for now.
That sound good? So do we have, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion to?
A motion to continue the item.
We have a motion to appeal, I mean, continue, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosado. And you know what, just a note of that, I think it's a good idea to get a legal opinion anyway, because this is going to be an ongoing. Okay. So with that, we have our next item, C. 4170 Gross Road, conditional use permit for a new cannabis establishment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chair Welch? Tonight, you have before you 4170 Gross Road. Applicant is proposing to convert 722 square feet of commercial space into a retail cannabis establishment within the regional commercial zoning district. Project includes a conditional use permit for the change of use, sign permit for a new sign, and a variance request for a second sign on the existing monument sign for the commercial center. Existing structure at 4170 Gross Road is a one-story commercial building with four tenant spaces off of Auto Plaza Drive, approximately 200 feet from 41st Avenue. The lot is adjacent to a storage business to the east, a residential neighborhood to the south, Pizza My Heart to the west, and an automobile sales business across the street to the north. So here's the proposed site plan with the building outline in blue, the lot line in red, and the proposed commercial space with the hatching there. With the addition of the retail cannabis business, the four commercial uses occupying the structure require to have 23 onsite parking spaces, and there are 24 spaces provided on the site shown here with the stars. On May 28th, 2019, the proposed retail cannabis establishment, The Hook, was one of two businesses selected as potential retail cannabis license holders. Potential retail cannabis license holders have six months, or in this case, until February 2nd, 2020, to obtain a conditional use permit from the planning commission for a specific location and appropriate state licenses. If the potential retail cannabis license holder is unable to obtain either of those requirements, the selection will expire immediately, and the retail cannabis license will be made available and publicly noticed. Under the Capitola Municipal Code, retail cannabis businesses in the regional commercial zoning district require a conditional use permit. In order for the planning commission to approve a conditional use permit, application for retail cannabis, the project must meet certain standards related to the distance from schools and churches, distance between cannabis establishments, independent access and signs. The project was reviewed by staff, and it complies with all of those standards. So the proposed floor plan with the entrance to the business is shown on the left there. Multi-tenant commercial site has two uniform signs for each tenant space. That includes one wall sign within a light box suspended from the roof overhang in front of each suite, and one tenant name plate on the monument sign. The applicant is proposing one 15-square-foot wall sign with the words The Hook and one green cross within the existing light box shown here. The wall sign is oriented toward the parking lot. The proposed sign is 10 feet wide by 1 foot 6 inches high with black lettering or yellow-to-orange gradient. The sign complies with the sign standards for the retail cannabis establishments. Because the sign standards for retail cannabis limit businesses to only one wall sign, the applicant is requesting approval of a variance to have a second sign, allowing them to have the name of their business added to the tenant name plates on the existing monument sign shown here. To approve a variance, the planning commission must make our favorite two findings, which I will not read to you tonight. They're listed here. For finding A, the special circumstance related to the property is the low visibility of the commercial property, such that one wall sign in the proposed location would not be easily visible from the street or sidewalk due to the orientation of the building on the property. The property is one of two properties located on Gross Road with very limited traffic and visibility on the dead-end street. The building is oriented into the site toward the parking area and does not face Gross Road. The main thoroughfare, which is 41st Avenue, is, as I mentioned earlier, 200 feet away from the property. In terms of the second finding, the grant of variance permit would not constitute the grant of a special privilege because the property is located, sorry, because every other non-retail cannabis commercial space in the regional commercial zoning district is allowed to have a name plate on a monument sign in addition to a wall sign if the property has three or more businesses. So it's the exact same situation as here. In addition, every other tenant in this commercial plaza currently has a name plate on the existing monument sign. So staff recommends planning commission approve this application subject to the conditions of approval and findings.
Any, thanks, Matt. Any questions for staff? I, I just have one question. Chief McManus, it was, he had some input on the site location. I didn't see his, on a letter.
We didn't solicit any for this staff report, but they're involved in the process.
Yes, so Chief McManus has been very involved with the applicant in terms of the license, licensing. And they have to look at the safety of the site, and they've been working with the officers. And he's very much aware, and was, he was part of the selection process and where we are today with the applicant that was selected. And he's, he's definitely been out to the site, and they've been, they're putting together their management plan and their safety plan, and that will all have to be approved as part of the, after the conditional use permit as part of the licensing.
Right, thank you, Kay. Okay, with the applicant, like, come and speak?
Hello, I'm Courtney Hughes. I'm with William Fisher Architecture. We are preparing the plans and helping Bryce Berryessa and The Hook business with their use permit, and then we'll also be assisting with the building permit. I'm happy to answer any questions. I guess I would like to say that Bryce is a business owner of other establishments, and I think has proven himself to be a responsible business owner that's taking into consideration the community and wanting to, you know, provide a cannabis establishment in a very responsible way. We've done a lot of projects with him. And I also just, it's probably obvious to everybody, but as I was looking at it, I wanted to be clear and mention that on that monument sign, the logo, or the hook with the gradient was not proposed to be on that monument sign. The monument sign would match all the other ones there. That might be obvious to everyone, but I just wanted to make sure. And that visibility of the, you know, of this is so hidden. You can't see it from 41st Avenue. It's hidden behind the Pizza My Heart parking lot, and there are multiple things kind of making it difficult to see from there.
Right.
Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Courtney?
I'd be curious if, if you would, would want to have a green cross on your monument sign. And if the owner of the property would allow that.
I don't know if, that wasn't something we were proposing. We were planning to have it match the other placards that are on the sign. If that was an option, it might be something that, owner, nope. He shook his head, not interested.
Yeah, and I, actually, I don't think it was an, I think when we wrote that, it could only be one cross if I remember right, so. Okay, any other questions for Courtney? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this? Come on up.
Commissioner Welch, my, my name is Bryce Berryessa. So I did just want to address and let you know that I've had Captain Daly out to the site. We did a full walkthrough. He's also gone through our security plan, and I've assessed and gone through with the checklist for what the police department's looking for, and made sure that we've met and exceeded all of those requirements without issue. So we have been in good dialogue with the police department and particularly Captain Daly around the issue of security at the location.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Great. Anybody else that would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the planning commission for discussion.
As I say, you know, that, that center is virtually invisible. And to me, it just makes complete sense to have their sign on the, on the monument sign.
Any other discussion?
I think it's a good spot for the use personally.
Anybody else? No?
Welcome to the community.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I'm looking for a motion.
Move approval?
We have a motion, and a motion and a second?
As stated?
Yeah, with the conditions as stated.
Very good. Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And it passes. Congratulations, welcome.
If I may, I just wanted to bring to your attention that we allowed two sites, and only in the regional commercial zone. It was very difficult for the applicant to find a site due to, like, different restrictions within Brown's Ranch, the mall, proximity to other uses. So in the future, when we're considering this, it really pushed them to one location within the regional commercial. But it, it was, it was, it was hard for them to find the right location. And right up to the last minute, where we have that six-month requirement of finding a spot. So as we're thinking of zoning code updates in the future, and if, if we want to make it, I think we limited it to the regional commercial because it was our, the first two. But just knowing that that was very difficult to achieve for the applicant, and so...
But we have our two now.
We do have our two. So we're good. But just to be aware, that it was, it was tough.
Very good. Okay, so that moves us on to our last item on the agenda. 111 Capitola Avenue, conditional use permit for alcohol sales with a tasting room for a commercial structure located in the Central Village.
Thank you, Chair Welch. The applicant submitted a request for a conditional use permit, as you mentioned, for alcohol sales with a tasting room in the Central Village zoning district at 111 Capitola Avenue. The property is located along Capitola Avenue between Capitola Seashells and Capitola Reef. Capitola Avenue contains one and two-story structures with retail uses on the first story. 111 Capitola was originally a single-family home. Then it became a mixed-use space with commercial in the front and residential in the rear, the traditional mixed-use setup, before becoming entirely commercial when the non-conforming residential use was discontinued sometime prior to 2011. sometime prior to 2011. The applicant is requesting a approval of a conditional use permit for alcohol sales. Business would be operated by English Ales Brewery, which is pretty local, located in Marina, California. The small 775-square-foot building is proposed to include 341 square feet of retail space for the sale of to-go beer and beer-related items and 158 square feet of space for a tasting room, shown here bordered by the dashed red line. The remaining space includes a storeroom, storage room, bathroom, and the service bar area. Proposed hours of operation would be from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday and 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday. According to the operation plan, can I keep going? Sorry. Okay. According to the operation plan, the business would provide three main functions for them: introducing English Ales craft beers to the local populace and visitors, developing their wholesale business within Santa Cruz and Santa Clara counties by providing prospective accounts with a facility in which they can taste their products, and establishing a retail outlet for beer and beer-related items such as glassware, mugs, growlers, shirts, and other things. The proposed use will not intensify the parking requirements for the site, so no additional parking was required. Chief Police Terry McManus has reviewed the application, conducted a site visit, and made findings that support the approval of the type 23 alcohol license at 111 Capitol Avenue. He also provided a letter of necessity and convenience for the project, which is required by the ABC, as you're very familiar with at this point, for a location in a high crime area where a census tract with the over-concentration of alcohol outlets. So how did we arrive at this proposed arrangement? As you all know, businesses serving alcohol in the Central Village District require a conditional use permit. However, alcohol tasting rooms are not defined in the zoning ordinance, so staff in order to arrive at this setup had to review similar uses within the zone. We also looked at the new zoning code and tried to figure out a way to treat this, this proposed use. We knew that there was at least one other tasting room, Armida, that's existing at 103 Stockton Avenue, and then via some public comment that you saw, the email exchange, there was actually another one in the David Ling Building at the corner of Stockton and Capitol that was actually approved in 1979. I found that out after staff were in out, so I put that in here. So there have been two wine tasting rooms in the village. Neither of those included a maximum number of seats. Both were actually designed with just a bar, where people could come in, stand, taste wine, mingle, and then leave. There have also been multiple takeout eating establishments that were approved with alcohol sales as well, and those under the code are restricted to the six seats or less. And then the new zoning code actually limits the huge consumption area of takeout restaurants to actually under 160 square feet. So we took all those things and put them together to help the applicant design what you see before you tonight. So they have limited the area open to customers for alcohol consumption to less than 160 square feet, shown where six seats would be located in the, inside the tasting area. And all that was basically to make sure that the use wasn't going to get intensified and have more parking required. So staff recommends the planning commission consider what we put together in the staff report and the proposed setup with the alcohol sales and tasting room. Planning commission may not agree with this interpretation, and so we put together several options for you. You could approve that, approve it, obviously. You could also deny the application due to the use not being specifically listed under the land, as a land use within the CV zoning district. At that point, tasting rooms could be then further analyzed during future zoning code updates. So at this point, we just, I'll hand it back to you, I guess, and you can either approve it, deny it, or discuss it and take some other route.
I'm going to chime in real quick. Typically, we like to attach a strong recommendation or recommendation to an applicant. With this, we did, you know, as Matt went over, we looked into the history of other tasting rooms. Typically, for a land use permit, it's great to have a defined use and to have conditions tied to it for a conditional use permit. So we also understand that with LCP updates, it takes a lot of time to get the zoning code updated and applicable within this area. So looking at that, we went with what we've seen happen in the past, but didn't want to give a very strong recommendation on this one since it was based on previous interpretations. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? No?
I'm not sure if I can formulate this question, but I'm wondering what impact this has on some other sites in the village such as 401 Capitol Avenue.
So taking this action, if you were to support the tasting room, other applicants could come in and have to-go sales for retail, for alcohol, and it could be, this would be in the CV. Across the street is still the neighborhood commercial zone, so a little bit different in that they, they can already do to-go, like sell a six-pack there, but it tastes, you would be allowing another tasting room within Capitol. If you were to tell us that you'd like staff to clarify the definition, come back within the zoning code, or, because typically what you don't have listed in the code is expressly prohibited within a code. So this is, right now, if we could take the stance that it's not, it hasn't been defined with the code, so therefore it's prohibited, but because it's, they've been approved under this interpretation in the past, we brought it forward, so.
How do you determine the parking requirements for the use that's not specifically provided?
So because this has been interpreted as retail sales with tasting, it has no parking associated with retail sales.
It's the same parking.
It's the same parking. It's 240, one space per 240 square feet of area, so it doesn't intensify it because it's retail sales.
So they don't have any tables in there?
No, they have two.
And a bar.
Takeout restaurants with six seats or less, three tables, are also 240 square feet per parking space, so.
That's the only part that is kind of puzzling me a little bit, is we're taking the use and applying the retail. We don't have anything specific in the code and we're applying the retail rules to it, but yet it's not really because we're allowing tables and.
A takeaway restaurant, you can have up to six seats without a parking requirement.
So I think there should be a clearer line drawn on this one. The restaurants, we're just to give the example of the six seats, this is not a restaurant, they will not be serving food, so that really shouldn't be part of this evaluation. It's a retail sales with tasting, different than restaurant, no food onsite. So in that aspect, it really doesn't fit under our code, under the typical restaurant, to-go restaurant with a maximum of six seats.
So if we approve this, would that give the Armida Winery precedent to put in tables and chairs in their tasting room?
They're not limited right now, they could put in tables and chairs. There's no condition on their permit regarding tables and chairs, so we've looked back at their permit. There was a deli next door that was limited to six chairs, but not.
Yes, I don't have a problem with this application, I just don't want to create any kind of flood of similar applications as a result of, I mean, I'm not sure how we carve this one out.
So obviously we need to develop some guidelines for tasting rooms.
So we just approved one in the Mercantile, it's a coffee, beer, but they serve food?
It's a restaurant with to-go, yeah.
But it's, this is a similar but different because of the lack of food, so it's kind of a.
I'm not sure why, I'm not sure what the concern is, frankly. We're setting precedent for something that there'd be too many more tasting rooms in the village and not enough shops or something, or what's the concern? The concern I have is 401 Capitol Avenue. Which is the, I don't know which one that is.
The white one right across the street. Sorry.
Okay.
But that's a different zone, because that's the neighborhood commercial, not the Central Village.
But it doesn't really, they could do, they could come in with a similar application, it would be a modification to their CUP to serve, to have retail sales with a tasting room. They could come in.
Based on this?
Based on this.
Would be pretty much a precedent for it. And that's a problem because I'm kind of conflicted.
Yeah, because he's conflicted. The, it becomes a parking, so, yeah, so they are, the only difference is, in fact, they call themselves the Capitol Tap Room? Is that what they're, that's their, the 401 property? So, but they don't serve alcohol at this point, just kombucha, so it's a little bit different, but I understand the process. It'd be nice to have a little more, because I see this as a trend, and so it'd be nice probably to have this looked at. If we don't have any more questions for staff, I'll ask the applicant to come up.
Hello. Oh, sorry. My name is Karen Blackwell Harrison. I'm actually the daughter of the applicant. My parents are out of town right now, so I get to be here with you. But I'm a member of the family business in Marina. We are English Ales Brewery, we're family-run. We have been there for 20 years now, and we have a nice little pub, Locals Place, and we distribute and wholesale our beers also. And we don't do things really quickly, so it took us 20 years to decide we'd like to open another little tap room and, and we thought Capitol would be a great little spot for that. So it's just basically a small place, as you saw, it's just a place to get people to be able to taste our beers, particularly in this area. We, we have a couple of counts over here, but not very many, so it gives us an opportunity to maybe open up our customer base a little bit and hopefully last another 20 years and gives us a chance to, we do have some of our regular customers live over here, so they're excited to be able to have our beers this side too and be able to get some product to go. So basically, it'd be a little, little tasting room like we do at the pub, we have little four-ounce tasters. It's not a bar, we've never done the bar thing. Won't be any food, and then we'll have retail also, so some of the English Ales swag that we like to sell, and then some other little English trinkets and such. So, I have to answer any questions. I have my parents on speakerphone, I've muted them so they don't talk the whole time, but in case there's something I don't know, I'm going to unmute my mom.
That's a pretty good move there. Very good, Karen. Any questions for?
I have some questions. I'm just wondering, if I'm sitting at those tables, what are the quantities of beer I can buy? Can I, can I buy beer to-go and then sit at that table and drink it?
No, you can't, you can't buy to-go beer and sit there, same as at our pub. We have product-go, six-packs, anything bottled like that, or, or at our pub in Marina, if you fill a growler, that's not for onsite consumption. Onsite consumption would only be what's on the taps there.
So what quantities do you serve on tap?
Our tasters are four ounces and then the pints are 16 ounces.
So a pint's a pretty good size.
Yeah, it's a, it's a US pint.
So if I came in there with three of my friends and sat there and started ordering pints of beer, what's to stop your business from allowing that to happen?
To stop you from having too many of them?
Well, if I want to come in there and have pints of beer with my friends, to me, that turns it into a bar.
Okay. I think space-wise, people are not going to stay there all that long. I think it's going to be more like a wine tasting room where you have a couple tastes and then you move on to the next place. I feel it's more that type of atmosphere. Also, we've done this for so long, we've been in the bar business a very long time, we wouldn't allow you to drink too many beers.
The concern I have with that is the physical layout, because you have the tasting room with the bar, and then over on the frontage or the front of the building, you've got the chairs.
Right.
And the tables. I imagine you're only going to have one employee working at any one time.
Yeah, I would assume so. I think it's going to be my dad, first of all.
Okay, but if that person is behind the bar there in the tasting room, there's no visibility of those tables from that particular workspace.
If you're in there, from where you are, you can see around the corner there, it's actually not all that big. Also, our job, when we, I've been bartending for a lot of years, part of my job is to monitor everything else, so even at our place in Marina where it's larger, I don't just stay behind the bar, I'm out monitoring, cleaning, picking up things, and interacting with customers, so it would be monitored and it's not a very big space, so it's easy enough to move from there and come around into the retail space, plus we would want to talk with those folks also.
Yeah. I'm just saying, if somebody's busy behind the bar, serving people that are tasting, and you've got a group sitting over at the table and maybe some of their friends come in or just standing up, I don't see how you control that.
I understand that. I honestly don't think that's an issue, because we already control that type of thing in the bar that we have now. We just don't, we don't allow people to just stay there and drink for a really long period of time. We monitor that, and this is such a small place that I think that'll be easily monitored, honestly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Karen? I just had a quick, so your place in Marina, is it also a tasting room or is it, it's actually a pub?
It's our brewery, so it's where we make the beer, and then we have a tasting room onsite and a pub. So it began as the brewery, we started because we wanted to produce beer, and then we added the tasting room and pub onsite. We just, we're not fancy food, we're a little pub grub type of place, great local following, so we kind of were hoping to do the same thing over here.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else that would like to speak?
My name is Jill Campbell, and I'm the former CEO of Laguna Seca Raceway in Monterey, California. English Ales has been a client of ours for the past 18 years, and I just want to say that I have never worked with a more responsible organization there. To your concerns, sir, about people sitting around drinking a lot of beer, it's no different than a wine tasting room where they're tasting beer. I think that you'll find that these people have a license to protect as well, and so their responsibility is enormous, and I would strongly recommend anyone to have them as a tenant or as a business in their local area. Thank you.
Good evening, Karen Hannah. So I'm here supporting this project, kind of on behalf of all the businesses on Capitol Avenue. We're extremely excited to see this type of business there. It should bring, if nothing else, more light in the evening, because it's on a very dark part of the street, and several of the businesses there close fairly early, and so the other people are really excited to have something that's going to stay open later, it's going to be a little bit more lively. Those of us who do stay open late find that people are walking around and they're complaining that nothing's open, and having a place that is established as being open, I think, is actually going to be a real asset. I know maybe year-round, they might not stay open till late, I don't know, but I know that during the busy times, it'll be really nice to have them there. I've met the gentleman, her dad, and he just, I just can't even see how you'd be concerned that he's going to have a place that's rowdy or difficult or in any way a problem, because he just couldn't be nicer, and, you know, a nice middle-aged man that, you know, is going to have a nice business there, and the fact that they've been in business for so long down in Marina, I think speaks volumes. So, yeah, we're excited about it and we hope you approve it. Thanks.
Excuse me, are you speaking for the BIA or?
Well, we haven't voted in the BIA, so I can't really say that we've taken a stand, because they didn't really come to us for any kind of approval. We just, you know, Rodney's here as well, and we just spend a lot of time talking to other people on the street, especially about the issue of businesses being open later, light in that part of the, that particular side of the street and that block, which has no streetlights and only, pretty much depends on the businesses and the palm tree lights for any kind of illumination. Everybody just seems to be very positive. The gentleman has made an effort to meet the neighbors and they're very positive about it too.
Not concerned about increased parking issues or any?
Oh, no. No.
Okay.
Not at all. I mean, people, you know, the reality of the small shops is people come and they go from one to the other, to the other, to the other, maybe they eat, and then they leave. It's, you know, the people who are living down there have permits and such, they're the ones that, you know, park in there, they may be there, the car may be sitting in front of your business all, the whole weekend, or a whole week even, you know. So, yeah, no, I don't think this, this type, especially because it was a retail shop before. So it may be a more, slightly more popular retail shop, but that really isn't taking it. into consideration in the ordinances, it's just retail to retail. So, no, I don't, nobody's expressed that concern.
Thank you.
To us, anyway. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Rodney?
Hello. Rodney, we're talking with Capitola Candy Company. We're super excited to have a place that's gonna be open past 6:00 PM, in all honesty, on Capitola Avenue. It's gonna create some nighttime traffic for Capitola Avenue. A lot of times, people just come around right there at Stockton and go straight down to the Esplanade, and we lose all that traffic, so having somebody open there past 6:00 PM is gonna be awesome, and I think it's gonna encourage a lot of people to shop more down our street. And then, on your view of the tasting room, I went in there for the first time to see what they're working with. It's very small. I mean, very small. They have a very small space to work with, complete view right there through that little doorway that you see, that I could see where you're kind of concerned with, and I don't see you and your buddies wanting to sit in there for more than a few tastings. I have a feeling you'll be taking six-packs out, or their growlers.
Those days are behind me.
Yeah, it's, honestly, just the space, it really is a tasting room, and they're really pushing those growlers and those six-packs to take home. So, we're really excited about it, and I've talked to pretty much everybody along that side, and I haven't heard a single person concerned about parking, or anything for that matter. And I've met Pete, the father, as well. Great guy, very family-oriented, will fit in the village awesomely.
Great. Thanks, Rodney.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's everybody in our audience. Oh, we have one, would you like to speak to?
I'm just a husband.
Okay, got it.
I'd see an approval.
All right, I'll bring you back to the planning commission for discussion.
So, I'm gonna, I think everything is good about this, and I think there is a distinction, but I'm gonna abstain, just because of the kind of issues I mentioned before.
Okay.
I move approval.
Okay, so we have motion for approval?
I second.
And a second? All those in favor?
Can we do a roll call?
Oh, yeah, we can do it. That way, we can get your abstention.
Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
Excuse me, Chair Welch.
That's all right.
Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilk?
Aye.
And Commissioner Newman abstained.
Very good. You passed. Welcome to Capitola.
Thank you.
So, with that, I pretty much, it's the end of our night, so director's report? Or you're gonna talk about the?
Yeah, I have, I've got a few things for you. So, first, I'll go over the, where we're headed with the zoning code update. We're gonna be hitting it pretty hard beginning of January. There is a few changes to state code that really impact our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So, in January, you'll be hearing an update to ADUs. Temporary signs were also, there's something in the, that would be open to lawsuits, so we're gonna be making a change to our temporary signs. And also, the regional commercial zoning district, we had the modifications in there regarding density that kind of got stuck with all the coastal updates, and I want to bring those forth before the mall application comes back. So, there was removing the density limits that were, we removed from the general plan, and this would be the follow-up to remove them from the zoning code as well, because that would, so we'll go over those in January. Following January, the city council had sent us back to the Coastal Commission to get some questions answered. We are actually meeting with Coastal Commission tomorrow. They've had our questions for about, they've been working them over for two to three months. We've got all their comments. We worked through those, their comments with our city attorneys. We'll meet tomorrow, but we plan to go back to the city council in February to talk about the coastal overlay zone, which is quite substantial, the changes there. Parking in the Central Village, this is something you've had to grapple with quite often, and we'll be bringing that to city councils to discuss. Monarch Cove Inn is an outstanding item for the council to discuss, as well as the Village Hotel in Heights. So, those will be discussed in February and March. As we discuss them with city council, I'll be bringing to you, them to you, the following meetings to give you update on the direction, so that you're getting this in pieces of what the updates are from the city council. And then, we're gonna move forward with adoption hearings in April and May for planning commission, probably a special meeting to hear this as one item and really get to go through any questions you have. I plan to first bring, have it as a, give you a broad overview, and then at the following meeting, ask for a motion, so we can really work through the items. And then, city council, May or June, and then submitting the LCP. So, a year behind schedule where we were hoping to be, but we had some hiccups in the road, and we wanted to make sure that there was no overreach, so, and I think we're at a much better point, and we're looking forward to our meeting with the Coastal Commission tomorrow. So, other items I wanted to bring up is that the coast, the city council passed the first reading of a sidewalk vending ordinance, and this will impact all of Capitola. This is something that came down from the governor's office and, that became applicable in 2019, and we, just with our LCP update and everything that was going on with zoning code, we didn't have, we had initial discussions on this with city council in the summer, and then with the mall application coming in, we finally have gotten around to the first reading, and it's a pretty restrictive ordinance in terms of trying to protect health and safety of our residents, and make sure we've got setbacks. You're allowed to protect the experience from our parks and the enjoyment of nature, so there are larger setbacks from our beach and Esplanade Park. Also, our pathways are going to be protected, so up on Grand Avenue pathway, the pathway above the railroad, on Prospect. So, I'll bring you more details of that once it's adopted, but really try to protect the city and make sure that the natural enjoyment can continue without having vendors all over the city, and there's lots of new regulations there. The other update is, this past week, 401 Capitola Avenue across the street was doing work outside of their permit. They were installing a patio that was much larger than was approved by the planning commission. So, we've red-tagged the building. There was also work being done inside that was outside of the permit. Prior to moving forward, they're going to have to update, get an updated building plan. They're going to have to remove the patio that was required to be smaller, and any improvements that are on the exterior that were not approved by the planning commission. So, just wanted to let you know, we've got that situation under control. The applicant is happily working with us, but was not following the process, so we've been working closely with her, and I think you're gonna be seeing the pavers removed in the, shortly, and then the posts, so.
See, there are two new parking spaces in front of their place there. Were they gonna be, were they gonna be painted green?
I believe, green or yellow.
Okay, yeah, because there are no parking meters, but yet, yet at least, and I thought they were gonna be 24 minutes.
I thought they were gonna be yellow.
Yeah, I thought that's what we recommended, but it seemed like Public Works said different. I can't, I don't recall now.
It is different from what it was.
I think our recommendation was it to be 24 minutes.
I'll send you an email and let you know what that is, because.
So, on the zoning, can I ask a question about the zoning code? Would this be an appropriate time to do something simple with regard to tasting rooms in the CV zoning?
Possibly. I think so. We're trying not to continue to introduce more to the zoning code, because we really want to get it.
You pointed out that there's a.
But, this is, there is a need for this one to clarify.
Ambiguity or gap in the code, and it'd be very simple just to confine that to the CV district.
True.
Just guidelines that aren't embedded in the code?
Yeah. Or this CV, and maybe the regional commercial, or CC, but.
Very good. Any questions for staff?
I have a couple. I've heard that Swenson has pulled the plug on doing anything with a hotel down there. Is there any truth to that?
There is no truth to that at this point.
Okay, okay. And then, what's the, what's the status of the old Orchard Supply building and the new, what is it called, Home Supply?
Outdoor Supply, hardware. So, previous employees of Orchard Supply have created a spin-off business, and it's outdoor supply hardware. We've been working diligently with them to get them open as soon as possible, and it doesn't need any permits, other than building permits, because everything will fit in the original location, and, so we're hoping, any time now, the, they've been working away over there and hoping for, and they were hoping to open before the holidays, so.
The biggest issue with Orchard Supply over the years was the sidewalk in front of Orchard Supply, so just.
Their sidewalk sales.
They're aware of that.
So, I shared the original, or that conditional use permit about the stamped concrete areas and everything, so they've been made aware of what their areas are out there.
Okay.
We've got the same problem with Whole Foods.
That's a.
The side lot there.
That's when we'd see Ron Graves come talk to us.
Yes, exactly.
Any other questions, or any commissioner comments? Those were good things. Well, I guess we're adjourned until January 16th. Everyone have a great Christmas.
Happy Holidays.
And New Year. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks.
401.
Great. Everything.
What's that?